I want to kind of order this work session. This is the first all department work session I've had since I've been on. So I appreciate everyone coming. It wasn't required to come, but I appreciate those that made the time and sorry about the late time change. But I do want to thank Nick. Anytime he wants to change all of our meetings to eight o'clock, I am more than happy to do that. I am a morning person. I think the best time of the day to make decisions is first thing in the morning. And we all aren't busy, so I appreciate everyone coming. We don't really have an agenda set, but my expectation is this shouldn't go more than an hour. Even though I've been on the commission a long time, I still think any meeting longer than an hour sometimes is not very productive. So I like to get down to business. I guess I did send out an email, kind of. I just like to bounce ideas back and forth. I don't want it to be me talking. I don't really have any set thing. I just kind of wanted to get your feedback on where you think the county is. Where are we falling short? What are our expectations? Where we want to be like in five years? And how do we get there? We've got to come together. We've got to work together to do that. And I can see with the positive, start with the positive. You guys are our best assets. I'm amazed at how much in this room, how many years have been dedicated to this county. Our, you know, department heads have been here. You've put in the time. You know so much more about the county than I do. You're here every day. You've been here year after year. And it doesn't go unnoticed. I want to say that. So I very much appreciate that. So didn't know if you had anything to say?
No, not really. I kind of want to get started with the program and understand everybody's budgets and know their feelings on what they anticipate for the next few years. You might add this one year and it just kind of multiplies on the future years. What your expectation, expectations for each of your department, what you're wanting to do for the next upcoming fiscal years.
I think we've always just looked at one year. I don't know about in the past. Nick, I do appreciate that if I need to know anything about the past, you're here. So I think looking forward, and I think about if I run again, you know, then another term, it'll be another five years. What do I want the county to look like in five years? I think we all need to be looking forward to that and, you know, setting our budgets in that, okay, this is one year, but this is where I want to get in five years. So, hi Paul.
Hi.
Do you have anything to say? We're just kind of putting it out there. We just kind of want to hear from every department.
Yeah. Don't sit for me at the chase.
One is all I can handle. So we appreciate being here.
Does any department head on that have anything to say or kind of? As far as the new budgeting process and access to information that we really haven't.
Oh, well, yesterday I did receive our draft one. Yesterday around lunch, worked with Jacob on, you know, some understandings of what that looked like. The commission you guys received this morning, a workbook is what it's called. It'll be, it's in your emails already. The workbook is literally beautiful and amazing and makes it very easy to understand. It's something I've never seen before in any of my years here. I think Sydney's seen it because we had some questions on how he was moving some different funds and things around. This workbook is going to show you more information than what you generally receive in this PDF. Our R and R for this year is forty-two point nine oh nine.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Forty-two point nine oh nine is our R and R, which is our revenue neutral rate. Our current, our current middle living rate is forty-nine. This budget represents meeting the revenue neutral. And that is showcasing and inputting all the numbers that were given to us for everyone's proposed 2024 budgets departments. It also showcases the requested amounts from our outside entities. The biggest notice that I see to help support us, to get us here, is a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer from the wind farm pilot. I don't want to speak for Jacob, but Jacob, from my conversations, is against us going down to the R and R. And I think I would have to, my professional opinion, I would have to agree. You, at this point, especially with values increasing, and our freezer already explained that we are potentially may see another increase for next year's values. You've said that at meetings.
What I haven't seen is anything going down. We're still seeing housing market values are still on the rise.
So potential, potential.
We are getting closer though to having everybody else where it should be. So it should not be a huge increase this year because we've worked the last two years to get us there.
What happens when that happens? We've talked about this and Nick, you've hit on it. If we continue to chase the R and R as our values go up, R and R drops drastically. We won't ever catch it. We'll eventually be in a point to where, A, we run out of funds from our non-budgeted funds to support the budget. We won't be able to do it. And you will eventually see a year where constituents could see an increase of five, six, seven, eight, nine mils to support. So what you guys are doing really good, you know, I call it, it could essentially be the Clinton years, right? That we have, we've come all the way down and potentially the next commission would have a really bad choice of having to come all the way back up. That's my fear if we keep chasing this R and R. And I think Jacob covers a lot of counties in the state of Kansas and none of theirs are meeting the R and R. So you guys aren't breaking the mold or the wheel. I think you'll see a lot of entities within our own county that aren't going to be able to meet the R and R. Everyone's moved drastically down. Not by one or two points, but five or six, seven points for some people like ourselves here at the county. Yes, we had a ten to twelve percent increase on assessed value, but basically that comes out to actual dollars to be spent, roughly five hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's not as much as you think. Assessed value is not actual dollars. But once you get into that, it's about five hundred and forty thousand. I did talk to Jacob a little bit about the pending bridge project for next year that we have to come up with somewhere in the realm of two point seven to three million, I think was the number I'd heard. We right now are potentially looking at, with all of our non-budgeted funds combined in the high amounts that we do have in those, we are almost in a, and you'll see this in the workbook, he mentions it, we're almost in an on-hand cash violation. We received those wind farm pilot funds and we're saving them back, but we don't mark those for specific projects, at least enough to compensate the large amounts that's in there. I talked to Jacob a little bit, well, what do we, what do we do with that to correct that? What are we doing? You know, we have the bridge project. So one idea, and obviously this is commission's decision, it's not mine. I'm just trying to spit fire in the background, what we can do. We have currently wind farm with the deduction of one hundred and twenty-five thousand. I did email Commissioner Clausen yesterday to see if you had a spreadsheet for anything else that was planned or thought to come out of that. Did you, did you have it?
I haven't looked at it, but I'll look at my old spreadsheet.
So that puts us to about two point two-ish million just in the wind farm, with another million expected in May of twenty-four. One way to get to that bridge project and easy, just not, you know, it's going to be the wind farm pilot fund. It'll get us out of that violation, potential violation. And it'll help support the project. That's one idea. I'm not saying that's something I agree with. I'm not saying that's what I'm promoting. I'm just saying that's an option. You do have that. And so that's looking at a forty-six, forty-seven-ish mil rate and using the wind farm money. If you use two million of the wind farm money and we set it two point two with another million coming in May, it'll give you one point two for the rest of the year. Something that Jacob also wanted you guys to look at is, he's not sure if what we budget for the general on outside of the budget side of departments is enough. Right now it's projected a little low. Normally we only carry in and budget five hundred and forty, five fifty. So that's another reason, regardless of the bridge project, if we want to even consider the mill going down to the R and R for that very reason, alone set aside from the funds we need to find for the bridge project. Does that make sense? I guess initially. That's, that's basically the gist of what I have right now. This is a starting point. Jacob has asked if there's a middle rate you would like to target. You know, let, let me know. I can let him know. He can work through those and give us options on how we get to that.
So that's close on the pilot. I don't have anything else that I have listed. As long as we can work with the city of Erie for their project to come out of a heartburn.
Sure.
So is, is the violation or the close to being violating the cash on hand only because of the pilot fund? Because we had asked for all those other funds that we're not using, how, what balance is that?
It's not the amount of funds, it's the balance in the fund. That is not earmarked for a certain project. So we're just hoarding tax dollars basically is what it looks like. Well, they're not tax dollars, but we're using tax dollars for things that we could be funding with the pilot fund. It's the balance in it. That's the problem.
Interests.
Because we don't have anything specific that we're using it for.
It's not kind of specific yet out for me.
Right, right.
Right. So the easiest way to explain that, like, just to break it down, really, I had a conversation with someone yesterday helping them with their budget. Cemeteries, a lot of cemeteries are, the R and R came out to be scary. It's not supposed to be, okay? It's not supposed to be scary. It's supposed to showcase with the amount of dollars you're coming in, if you have no projects, if you have no improvements. And then it doesn't, the R and R does not calculate, there's nothing in the formula that calculates cost of living increases or just cost of supplies in general. Fuel going up or anything like that. Yeah, it doesn't cover any of that. It doesn't take any of that into account. So like cemeteries, they want to meet, they're very small entities. Their bills are like one point three, one point two. And they want to get to the R and R. They've been told it's scary. I need to get to the R and R. But fuel's high. They can't. So they, you know, how do you justify that? Just have that plan in place. Fuel's more expensive to build a cemetery now. You know, before we were at two dollars and twenty-two cents and now we're at three. Yeah. So that's the idea behind that. You just have to justify and earmark that. But Sydney's absolutely right. It's the balances combined with no ear tags of projects or plans.
So can you tell us again, since everyone's here, when do we have to notify about the R and R?
To the clerk, you have to certify July fifteenth. So we'll probably need to do that at our next meeting.
So we have to, we have to decide whether we're going to exceed the R and R by July fifteenth, which is like two weeks, two and a half?
Well, and I wouldn't get, okay, and I told someone this yesterday. Again, don't get too nervous about that. I was going to have you exceed regardless.
Yeah.
Because if you don't, you are tying your hands to not have a choice. You're taking your choice away without, I would, you know, I don't have that by the fifteenth regardless. You're at this forty-two point nine oh nine. So every, I would, if you have a doubt, if you think there'll be a change, if you're not, if you don't have confirmation, you want to exceed the R and R.
Do we have to have a rate that we're going to exceed or just that we're going to exceed?
Just notice that you're going to have a hearing, then you possibly would exceed, right?
I do need to have an idea of a mil rate, of a target. Again, that's not, that's just details. It's not something that you're binded by. Like if you say, if you put this year's rate, like we know, our, I think my understanding is we don't want to exceed our current mil rate. So if you put this year's mil rate in that certification, you're not alarming constituents. We're not going up. But our goal obviously through conversations is potentially to come down off that. So I guess that would be my recommendation, I think, as well as Jacob's and my conversations with Brett. We would certify to at least minimally this year's mil rate and then with the potential to exceed.
And then the hearings have to be by August.
The hearings have to be set August twentieth through September twentieth. And we have to have ten days of publication prior to the hearing. That's a lot of information.
So as commissioners, I guess that's our struggle, is wanting to meet your budgets, but yet being careful with the citizens and their taxes, you know, not going up into that balance. And this year I think makes it very real because there is such a difference between the R and R. So yeah, that's, that's my struggle is just.
With the increased valuations.
Yes. It's like, oh, we could just leave it there, you know, and, and have that extra money, but yet I don't think that's wise either. So it's finding that balance for us is, will be what we're going to be looking at for the next month. So. Does anyone have any comments on that?
I will say a middle rate isn't that much. It's not what you think it would be. One mil only equals, I'm going off memory. I have it in here somewhere. It's only a hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars.
Hi Lori. Okay, I want to pause for just a minute because this came up during our last meeting and Cindy is here to talk about this, but it's the leave request form.
Everybody should have a copy. Lori, you will produce. Oh, thanks.
So there's been questions and I know the ones that we receive and I sign off on haven't always been the same. So I kind of questioned in the back of the handbook, there's one, and it looks different than the, in either one that I received at the last meeting. So I think there needs to be some clarity and just, yeah, we need to decide, I guess as a commission, you know, what we want. So, but there's no question.
Do you want to speak to the, yeah?
You might want to come, so you're on camera, you know, because.
I don't know if I'm camera ready to go. I didn't have hair make it today.
Well, we gave you warnings.
Yeah, I chose this. So my understanding, so let me back up. So yes, there are pages in the back of the two thousand and nine policy manual that are nowhere near what these, this form is. There are separate forms for specifically vacation, sick, like there's a form for each topic and each one is very different. I cannot speak to the validity and or accuracy when it was decided to go away from those because they started in twenty twenty-one. However, I do know that when Cindy Shauner was here, she's the one that started recreating and regenerating forms and combining them and getting them to kind of what we have today. When those were allowed, I don't, I'm not privy to that information. But what I have tried to do is stay consistent with what is on, is in the file. My best guess, again, this is just an assumption, is that that form that was allowed or approved maybe in a resolution or just it was generally understood has been, and I don't just manipulate in a negative way, just manipulated by the different leaders, whether, you know, so it fits them better and it was strange and the standard status quo wasn't kept. And so all I have asked since I've been here is that the status quo be kept because it allows them to maintain the same standards within their departments and it allows me to maintain the standard and the policy of how we pay people as in like, okay, simply policy says this, vacation says this, et cetera. So by having a documentation where it's, it's filled out correctly and everybody understands allows for that. And then if we ever get audited, there's no question that yes, the department had approved it and yes, I've received it acknowledging this because I don't ever want it to come back and say the payroll department took my hours from me or they didn't give me or et cetera. So having signatures, yes, that's why the form that I've been, most people have been using had those signatures. So the ones without it, it just got changed. There were lines added. And it, nothing malicious. It was just meant, you know, to help everybody. So what I did yesterday, based on the commission meeting and the guidance given, is I've come up with this form that includes, I know time leaving and returning is a concern for one department. I did remove all, well, no, I don't mean that in a negative way.
No, we're going to point you out Mike, but thank you.
I wasn't, no, what I was going to say is I know there's probably another, there's, I did talk to Mike. There's another department that does time, you know, leaving and returning, but it's not always on here. So this will benefit them as well. So you know, it's a two for one type deal. I did take out all the extra leaves that were across the top and I literally put the ones we use. I added other at the bottom where you can write in, should somebody need jury duty, civil leave, FMLA, et cetera. Those are rarely used, but the option is there. The five that are up there, now we can see, you know, specifically, yes, this box goes with this one. This is the one I want. It's also noted at the top and the bottom that payroll does not prove anything. I simply acknowledge receipt and that I have marked this for the payroll processing. That's all it's ever been. I want you guys to hear from me. I don't approve your stuff. I simply receive it and pay your people based on the document you provide me. If I have questions, I think I've come to all of you asking, hey, does this, is this what, am I understanding your notes correctly? So this is what I'm hoping we can use. And I can create a document to be signed at the next commission meeting, making it official that this is the approved policy for our leave requests.
So I, I guess this form, does it meet everyone's expectations for what they need for their department?
What I would like to see for my department, because like a lot of times they're going to take off for dance and different things. I would like it to be if they're going to take off four times that month, they could put it all on one form, we could send it in and we could do that.
This will not work, Teresa, because we have multiple payrolls per month and so I have to have a separate sheet for each payroll.
Okay. Yeah, there needs to be a separate one for each leave.
It has to be for each action. So if it's one day, twice a week, they're going to have to put two separate forms. If they're going to be gone for four days, one form is fine consecutively.
I was thinking about that with the paper.
If unfortunately, Teresa, the way payroll works, that will not work. I, I'm sorry.
I think definitely for the files, we need a separate.
Well, it doesn't work.
So, so I kind of after the meeting thought, if we could approve a form that at least this information has to be on everyone's form. And then if each department wanted to specialize that, but if we can, can come to a consensus that this is going to be the form everyone uses, that would be even better. That way it'll be put in the employee handbook and this is what is expected. So we just need feedback from you. Obviously they've taken Mike's consideration and if there's other things that, that you've been putting on yours, I don't know if you have a specialized form. But at least when it comes to the commission, I'm going to expect this is going to be on the form. You know, whatever we approve, anything added by your department is fine, but at least what we expect is going to be on the form. Do you understand? If you guys wanted to go beyond this, but right now.
This is basic form that we, we would expect to be done.
Right. But you can specialize something in your department if you need that. But what we put in the handbook, that's what we're going to approve.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would respectfully request minimal changes and or additions.
Yes.
And if you're going to do it, make it a handwritten adjustment please. Because not having a standard makes it a little more complicated for me. When I go to process a hundred and fifteen or a hundred and twenty people every people, I realize that's a small compared to some counties, but I am one person for those a hundred and twenty people. So, um, feedback, is there issues or concerns with this for anybody?
Looks good.
No.
Good, okay. Um, so if you're a minimal, I will draw a, a document to sign like what I've done for the past stuff and I'll have it for the next commission meeting. But with your consent, tentative permission, may we start using this if I send it in an email?
Is that okay? I mean, it's just one more payroll, yeah. So.
I'll get it out there so they can start sharing it, kind of get used to it and then.
Again, it's just the changes that come in, you know, having them in the handbook and making them, you know, permanent.
Well, that means in the handbook, like toile are done, laundry, third party done, life is.
Makes it easier. Yeah.
Right, well, and that's.
One page of time is ridiculous and it's very, very.
Or why?
Right, well, no, and just, and just to, to add on to that real quick, I do plan on getting back to policy stuff. The May, I don't know what we even want to call it, the May extravaganza crashes or whatever, you know, World War fifty-seven with electronics has kind of set back my timeline. But just for everybody's identification, I do hope to start looking at policy as a group maybe in August. Once we kind of get through the summer, through budget seasons, like a good chunk of budget season and that kind of stuff, and we can get back to the ones that really matter and then get all of the forms updated, get some more of the topics that matter to us attached and then hopefully we can get a better manual. So.
All right. We can't make any decisions today, but I think at our next meeting then.
Okay, I'll provide you with that.
Be informed and we'll make a motion and make that a permanent part.
I appreciate your time and thank you all for your support as always.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Hey, we're halfway through already. Sorry Lori, I, I want to limit this to an hour. I know we didn't really set a time and you guys have a lot of stuff to do and I believe meetings should be an hour long. So without an agenda, yeah, I'd like to, I still would like to meet individually with each department like we've done before. We're going to do some of that today, I think, but then still knowing, then you guys thinking forward also, what is, what do you want your department to look like in five years? You know, where are we going with this? What can we expect long-term down the road that might come up? And I think that's just something that's been missing. And some of these cash balances, we can put in, you know, capital improvements long-term and start looking forward to that when we have the cash. You know, let's not just look at this year and spend all the money. But you know, we can put things in a capital improvement account, correct? So that's, that's acceptable. Just having it in a pilot fund is not acceptable kind of.
Right, you have to have a goal for that balance.
So we received our third payment this year and it has bothered me that we've gone this far without setting some kind of, what are we going to do with this pilot fund? Because it is going to run out and it is a large amount of money. A lot of counties step forth when they have their wind farm. This is what we're going to do every year with our money. We haven't done that. So, yeah, I think that should be part of the budget process and I have some ideas. So anyway.
Yeah, the pilot funds, I think we need to look at, you know, some road improvements, some of that money.
Yeah.
Bridges and roads, all the departments, employee retention. Getting some active employees, I think is a big thing. I hear most every department, I mean, keeping and retaining good employees. I have some of the belief, I don't believe we can compete with private enterprise as far as some, we can't keep up with them. It's really hard, but we should be able to keep up with other inter-local governmental agencies. It is tough right now. Economics are really hard on people right now.
I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are. Is it just wages? You know, we had a county that just gave twenty-five to thirty percent increases. Does, is that solve everything? Are there other things in the county that we're missing that we can support employees? I mean, we have the best healthcare insurance.
We do.
So.
But it's also.
And I don't wanna change that.
We're gonna have to worry every year that we're losing because it seems like it's brought up every year and.
Yeah. Yes. And.
Absolutely.
Something that we have to fight to keep.
And the problem is people that are starting or young don't worry about retirement, they're more old. But I got some staff that are, I just caught, left a call. Seventy eight, seventy eight administrators left from July twenty, July one twenty-one to June third twenty-two. Three hundred and like seventy-eight people left in the year on public health. That is a huge amount and such a shame that we're in this over COVID.
So it's not just our county, I mean, that's the problem too. It's just across the board.
And so many counties.
But how, what can we do as a commission to help retain people, to gain new employees?
You know, the pay and wage, that's comparable. People can go to a gas station and make the same or more than they make here and the stress level is way more.
Yeah.
There is no reason a person would wanna come do a job here with the wage that they could go stock shelves at Walmart for.
But there's no benefits.
There are benefits, yeah, there's benefits.
Many of the top people that usually come from the neighboring county market providing benefits.
Yes, there are.
Cause they're paying more and they do have full benefits, there are ads on them.
Yes.
Lay that out. That county gave you grades, neighboring county.
Yes. Yes, I've lost employment too in that county.
We're training around everybody that's our people, we put them through training, we spend all that money. It's thousands, thousands of dollars for law enforcement over here. We've sent to the academy to establish, go somewhere else.
And we need young people. We need good people.
Yeah.
Our benefits are good here. It's the retention. Because our wage doesn't go along with, with what people need along with those benefits. I don't have any complaints on our benefits, those are great.
Those go in hand with what Teresa is saying, what she just said, we need young people. But then that also ties into what Greg said. Is that conversation that is had about benefits is never a positive one. It becomes very negative. We do too much, we, we, it's not, it's, it's too much, we're. That is a frightening thing, especially if we're wanting to target younger individuals that want to get planted here and save for the longevity. Young people are starting families, they're doing different things. And what's the most important thing to someone? It's their family, it's their children, which means benefits. And if we are constantly having a negative narrative to what we provide in benefits as a part of, what can we cut? What can we take away? Uh, it, it, I think it's diverse people.
I agree.
Also, I, I wanna point out that I think the workforce out there has changed over the years too. Because in the past, I know many of the, the guys down the road, rich departments. They may have been farmers, they may have been stockmen, they may have had some other way to bring in a little extra income on the side. Outside the regular job, the people that we're bringing in now, they don't have a side gig like the guy in the past did.
Yeah.
You know, they may have been able to pick up another, I don't know, ten or fifteen thousand dollars from a small cattle operation or something like that. These young people were hired, now they don't have that opportunity. So that was a way they supplement the lower wage, still has good health insurance, benefits, et cetera.
You shouldn't work from this county and have to supplement with a second job.
Right.
I agree, yeah, but that's what it's coming.
I've had people quit because their daycare expense is more than they can afford with what they make here. I mean, we can educate on the benefits and how those help you to these young people that don't fully understand what that means to them. It's going to take time for them to need those or start their family or, you know, realize, oh, hey, I should plan for the future. What gets them here now and keeps them is that they can support the families that they wanna start. Not that they have to worry every day, we'll go find a second job. You know, they shouldn't have to do that. And this should be a place we can work with pride, feel good about coming here. I, I would like to have that again. That's why I started working here. I felt good about it and proud to be here. I mean, I still do, but like it's been brought up, you know. We're in open meetings and you guys talk about cutting benefits, these employees are watching.
Yes.
And they hear that and that's all they take away from it. And it's, it's hurtful to them and it's scary. They feel undervalued, they feel like they don't matter.
I, I don't think we undervalue any of our employees. I mean, I, I, I did some, just did some census numbers this morning. Our whole county has lost about two percent of the population in two years. I mean, it could've been COVID or whatever, we've had a reduction. And twenty percent of the population in Yosia County is over sixty-five. So we've got a balance there that we have an aging population. And we need to recruit young people through the whole county. Uh, it's, it's a balance, you wanna make it more affordable to live here. Taxes ought to be low, utilities, I mean, we gotta be able to enhance some draw to Yosia County. How we can do that is, is a balance, I mean. And we do need to bring a younger family, bring some people back to the small communities. I just, any way we can get more jobs here, or better jobs. As a whole, I think we need to push for it. And housing, there is no housing.
Yeah.
Housing is horrible, so. That's kind of what I have to feel like I had a balance, cause I see all aspects of ages and everything. My job is just like, how do we make it more enticing to come and stay in Yosia Counties?
Well, as I look to being from Shanoot. It's this area of the county that we have to draw from, I believe. Um. So, that's why I wanna invest in this area. Having the daycare is very important here in the area. I was very happy to do that because I think we've got to enhance what we have here in this part of the county. Because this basically is the core, you know, of, of who works here. Uh, and to invest in this part, I, I don't know about housing in this area. So, uh, or if we, you know, can do anything about that, uh, with having the CRDA and.
Well, I think we do a lot with the neighborhood revitalization. I mean, how much more housing has been built in last area?
It's almost always in your district.
Yeah.
You know, that, that, that's good. That's good. People are investing in this area because that's where our courthouse is. This is where most people are employed. Um. So, you know, how we do that, I think that's very important. Because we are drawing from this area. And as Shanoot's industry continues to grow with Horizon B and W. You know, there's that pull that we don't have to en- enhance people to come over here, I guess. That's difficult. So I want to invest in this area. Um. I think that's, that's the key.
With the bridge project coming up, we also have a problem there. There are people on that side of the county that aren't gonna drive over here. That extra long route, if they can't afford the gas to get here, they won't go to Lebat County.
It will catch up, that's a two-year project.
Adolf said, uh, long construction season, I personally do not think that's gonna happen.
I'm worried about that too, that's a good point.
I'm worried, very worried.
I mean, tax revenue for areas.
Yeah.
To me.
It's horrible. It's gonna hurt, it's gonna hurt the employees, it's gonna hurt people who live here, it's gonna hurt the city. It's gonna hurt the county, we're gonna have to do the routes.
And you look at this whole section of the whole south. Each section of the county is gonna be fairly cut off.
Yes.
Or either go to Parsons or Lebat County or they'll come back up. But still, they gotta make a decision, which, which drive do they wanna make, so.
Well, I do wanna say, cause you had mentioned the pilot fund. I, I do struggle with putting the pilot fund into the general account. Uh, because sooner or later that's gonna go away and we have to operate without that. Uh. We're supposed to have an increase in our tax basis, right, Tommy, when they come off that ten years. But I don't trust the government to not mess with things.
I almost look for lobbyists to get those, the unbothered in like some of.
Yeah. Yeah. So, I, I'm hesitant to depend on that money for how we operate day to day. Now, if we can earmark that for projects that we don't have to take out of the budget. You know, but we're earmarking that, then I'd rather look at that. Um, so that it's not just lost. And I think that's why we didn't approve the nine hundred dollars the year before. Is that it, it just goes into that, you know, that general fund. Into our day-to-day operations and we don't see, you know, the benefit of that. Uh, but there are projects coming up like the bridge. Uh, and obviously we're gonna have to keep up our roads. Not just what we've done now, but if it's a two-year project, there's gonna be more, uh, roadwork that needs to be done.
Small bridges, I mean, you've done two really nice last six months. Or if you looked at the pictures, I mean, they're quality.
Yeah.
Work.
Very few counties can do that work. I mean. Very much appreciated and needs to be done around, um, the county.
There's lots of.
If our name, uh, you know, we've, and I'm not trying to fly a flag over here. But, uh, I just roughly went through my head on the structures that we have been able to do work on and, and save. And, uh, we probably saved two million dollars worth of block quarters and bridges in our county. And, uh, our guys know that. That's why, you know, I would like to see a consideration of a substantial increase in the county work. Waiting, not just for my department, countywide. Uh, because we do have people here working hard and making a difference. And that's how we're gonna keep, I just got notice this morning, I'm living with another guy, the young guy. Um, he didn't give me a date, but he said he would be, he's leaving here probably, you know, within the next couple of months. Good young man.
Was it his witness?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think long journey would be important, cause some of my staff have been there a while. And I think it's important that they, they get that acknowledgement. Cause you want them to stay, so you wanna encourage them.
So again, at least looking also at, um, countywide. Uh, I think we could all can have a consensus that there has not been an investment in the complex of the road and bridge for a lot of years. Um, it's something also, because when you come to work, I mean, you wanna come to a place that's at least nice and modern. Um, and I think that's part of the struggle that we have. I think we've made an investment, you know, in all of the other buildings. It's been a while now since we built the jail, but that was a huge investment. Uh, obviously road and bridge hasn't had an investment in that amount of time. Uh, but to retain men that wanna come to work. You know, we've gotta consider that too. And that's gonna be a long term, it's not something that is gonna happen in the next year. Um, but again, that's something that we can look at these outlet funds that we could actually invest in. But it's, it's discouraging.
We have done some major investments in equipment.
In equipment, yes, you're right.
Right, our, our age of our equipment and trying to keep good equipment under these, cause even like we've been sure of some vehicles. We've tried to enhance, you look at all the graders and the dump trucks. We're, we're trying to upgrade the fleet, that there, there's a kind of a blend that we gotta look at.
We have come a long way, but I know, uh, the county fell on hard times. While several, many years back, and that was nobody in this room's fault, but it happened. And there was a, uh, pretty much a freeze on buying equipment for many years. Uh, and that kind of got us out of the jam, but now it just comes back upon you. So we just now gained some ground, we've got a pretty good grader, couple new dump trucks. But we, we have to keep going, we have to invest in new equipment every year. We need to be making some major purchases every year, so you don't find yourself with a whole fleet of worn out equipment.
That's why I like, as you turn, turn equipment. You be able to get, get some of the older stuff off, bring in a newer, I mean, as you do, but don't just stockpile. And we, you do a good job as far as that, I mean, as far as, we have this usual purple way sale, getting rid of that old stock. But also we, as we buy new equipment, printers, copiers and stuff. We have some idea of the legacy cost tied to that piece of equipment. I mean, it's not just the purchases, it's the maintenance, it's the service agreements. All that is tied to that equipment that we need to visualize before we can say, hey, it's a ten thousand dollar piece of equipment. Uh, it's not ten thousand dollar piece of equipment, it's perpetually more expensive as you go, so.
Yes.
That, and that's right, but that's also just the cost of the damage. We don't get it for almost anything. And we do try to, with, again, we'll, we'll be having a purple wage sale sometime, I'll be getting a talking tape about. All the partners, maybe combine ourselves and get it in a sale. Some of the older trucks that we keep out there, uh, we cannibalize them because the parts availability on some of our older trucks. You just can't buy them. And so we do keep some old trucks out there just to run parts on.
Some of those, some of those are mid-eighties.
That's right.
The red, a lot of the red ones are mid-eighties.
For someday they'll, after we get all the parts that are, are used to us, then we'll build to the scrap art. That's how we keep going.
So how do, how do you guys feel about the other buildings that we have? Are there other investments that we need to make in the next five years? I mean, we did the HVAC here at the courthouse, I feel the courthouse is, is much improved. Uh, are there things, are there still things that we need to improve, uh, with the jail complex?
The jails, we've moved into an O two. We've had all kinds of problems with our water lines within just the last, and they've saved us a fortune. We didn't run the jail administrator's office this last time. But the state's wanna do an entirely. Digital system for fingerprints. We don't just fingerprint inmates, we have teachers and, uh, all kinds of people that come in and have to. That we fingerprint for. Those live scan machines are ten, fifteen thousand dollars a piece. We've just learned that the FBI has changed the CSGA stuff, which is gonna be statutory required. In order to just be able to transmit information over the radio. Talked to Shanoot yesterday while I was there, teaching a class over the law changes for July. I think he said there's like a two point four million dollar project. We just got new radios two years ago. Portals. Talked to KHB yesterday as well. They're getting a bridge to replace all their portals, it's a huge cost.
They're gonna mandate that everything's encrypted. Where when we're giving out somebody's driver's license information, nobody's gonna be able to get that information. And it, this is federal right now, the state, of course, gonna end up complying by it. Um, looking at, everything I read, um, was that by the time I have my next tech audit, and I believe that's in twenty twenty-five. Um, that's when it's gonna have to be completed. Now with Shanoot's, I, you cannot say that they are the one from VHF to eight hundreds.
I imagine that was a possible.
Yeah. So, but we're, this will be in the, I'm trying to get a quote on or a round figure. So some of that money you may be kind of starting to put towards that because we're gonna have to do it. There's no question whether we want to or not. And, um, I don't know how much it's gonna be, I'm trying to get it quoted. And because it has to be on both ends, it has to be on his end also. Anything he's transmission, transmitting to us. Anything he's transmission, transmitting to us has to be encrypted. So.
We have line detector machines, twelve, fifteen years old, that needs to be upgraded. Uh, our PBTs are body cameras, which are now required for us to have when we're interviewing anybody in custody. And our car cameras are ten, fifteen years old. We just keep making this up, so. You know, the PBTs and the toxilizer, we're required to have those because DUI isn't required. If you have probable cause, you have to make an arrest. That's part of what that special alcohol money was supposed to go for. I think a whole lot of money ended up going to alcohol instead because we don't spend that every year. But it's like, there's money in the bank, you can't save it, you gotta give it away. I don't understand that at all. 'Cause that's what that money was earmarked for. And then there's some decent equipment that we have to have, but we don't buy them. You know, they've counted up and then you buy the stuff. By the way, it's not a price, it's all of a sudden, give you ten, fifteen thousand dollars or something, it just don't happen.
So I think that the, well, I went to a budget workshop and I guess, this is an example, Butler County at the end of their third quarter, they look at where everyone is with their budget. If they feel like money's gonna be left over, they set that money aside. Right now, if you are under your budget, I mean, it's almost like the next year, they would look at your budget and say, well, you didn't spend all that money, so we're gonna lower your budget. It's almost like penalizing you. But yet if we said, no, okay, you were really good with your budget this year, we're gonna set that money aside in a long-term uh, account, you know, and let's have a project that we're gonna work towards. I think that's one thing that we've been missing because we're not looking forward to where we're going and we're not actually seeing the benefit of being under budget and doing something with that money. And that's part of what we're looking at is, well, where did that money go? You know, we didn't spend it all. Um, so.
That was one of the reasons I went with trying to get carpet in the building because I went through the year and I knew I was gonna have extra amount left over in the fourth quarter. So I wanted to use that to try to do some updates and I'd like to, I feel like I gotta keep some money in my budget just for the one year, because you don't.
There's lots of them.
But, you know, for even updating paint, I mean, I'd like to work on the corridors, they're falling apart daily. The mic is jumping off the desk, I mean, there's just, there are issues in there. So I'd like for that area, if you have my next spot to update in the building with carpet, maybe having the fences repaired and that stuff. So if I don't have a year where I've gotta spend my whole budget, that's where I'd like to see some of my money go is just, is just the updates. Where I'm gonna build a building for like twenty-five centuries.
Teresa?
Yes.
I thought you wanted to speak.
Um, so.
I'm sorry.
Talk about wish lists in the next five years. Of course, uh, just come back from a meeting yesterday, was there for a couple of days. And one of the things they said yesterday that really struck me, mental health is a public health crisis. And so several of the health departments, I did not realize this, put mental health, a mental health person in their health department two to three days a week. And that was something new to me. And I thought that was very interesting. And they do it like on whip day, so if something comes up that day, they're sitting there. And I don't know how they're doing it, but they're doing it with a brand, uh, with some of the grants we got. So I would like to have, we don't have the room to do that. And I realize not, buying a building is probably not a very good idea, but it would certainly be nice in the long term, for the next five years, to be able to do that. 'Cause I would like to stay up with what the other counties are doing. Well, we already have an investment in S E K mental health. Uh, is there any way that we could just have someone from their office come? Certain days, I mean, that's just an example of, because we have a huge investment with them. So we do invest in mental health. I know. So anyway, that's just my thoughts. So, Heather?
So. I agree with what you're saying with the rollover of, of, and putting them in funds and earmarking them if we think in third quarter, there's gonna be a rollover. But that's something, if that's what we're gonna start doing going forward and that's something you guys wanna do, this budget is not accurate. Because those funds where you're asking, where does that money go, it doesn't prove. It goes to, go for the next year's budget. So just for example, 'cause I might talk first, so I've had longer to look at hits. He's projected, obviously, we don't know what he's gonna spend between June and December. We've only ran through May financials. So he's projected of a five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-two carryover. That's three and a half mils. So if you wanna take that away and put the five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand into a capital outlay to put back for a rainy day project, then you're gonna have to give it, where this represents forty-two-point-nine-oh-nine, you're already at forty-six-point-four.
The carryover actually fills the next year's budget.
Yes, yes. And same thing with, with share. The only thing that is, and it does the same thing for all the departments that are under general.
Right, right, yeah. There's two.
I would, I guess my, uh, my suggestion is if that's something we wanna look at, and I think that's, I, I do think it's a great idea. But I think it's something you can't go, we're gonna do it and here's all the money and we're gonna roll it, roll it over. And I think if there are projects that we wanna look at that are paid out of the budgets now for this year, we kinda need to know that as we're doing these budgets too.
I think for the next year, we've pretty well committed to, to what we have with this bridge project and the extra roads.
Well, we've committed out of his budget for the unofficial detours.
Right.
We'll take a chunk. And we have Brady Road, Brady Bridge, North Elk Bridge. That alone is creeping into that three-point-four to three-point-seven million dollars, just what we've committed to.
We will have to, a little bit of chip to peel or expense. And then also, we're gonna have to, uh, create Jackson Road from Char Road, Forty-seventh Highway with Magnificent Overdrive. That'd be a pretty good expense there. We should get reimbursed for that, we have in the past, but we don't know how long it took that.
Are year ends for the grants this month? And as you know, we've got COVID money for the last couple of years, uh, for our projects. And so we pretty much, in June, 'cause we had no mishaps. And they're also talking about, the feds are talking about taking the money back, what we have not overcome. So we're gonna lose about eighty thousand dollars. But we bought computers for everybody to get those done. We bought a server, he's working on the trailer. I mean, we tried to get things for the next ten years to be prepared for that. And I think that that is the one thing. So this month, when you guys get the bills, Chris, we're gonna try to pay it. But we did everything we could to finish up for this year, 'cause they're gonna take that money back to my understanding. Um, so I tried to get it as low as I could. But they also are putting out brand-new grants. So my money has to stay separate, as you already know. But I don't know why I could not use some of that money that's separate and buy something like a vehicle for the next ten years. Okay, that's probably something to discuss in individual meetings. Um. So. Also, small projects that might come up is, we still have about a half a million dollars in ARBA. We have to commit it by the end of next year, but we have till twenty-twenty-six to actually spend it. But that, I don't, we have done a lot with outside entities. We've done a lot with rural water districts, which is great. Uh, we've done now a couple of projects with, uh, the city, the cities. And a lot of counties spent all of their money on the county. And so I would like to look at, you know, some of these projects that we need, we might be able to fund with that money. Uh, basically, Taylor says, we took the revenue loss, which is a big thing with ARBA that really, she just has to make sure the projects have certain criteria. Besides that, we're pretty open as to how we can spend that money. So I would like to look inside of, where can we again, outside of the middle levy, be able to fund some of these projects and get things up to where they need to be, so.
To that, or, and I, I have some ideas as far as keeping that last remaining ARBA money in county. I mean, we might have to start shutting off all these outside specials.
Yes.
I mean, the requests, I know we wanna pick the winner. We need to get the broadest access, you know what I'm saying? We're picking winners of certain, we need to get the broadest number of people that will benefit from those funds. We can enhance what the county offers. We're getting everybody in the county, we're not picking.
Yes.
One person to get this money, so, or one.
Or one area.
One area.
Yes.
I know, as, I know, we've had lots of outside requests, I was like, now it's time to.
It's starting to get very specialized.
Let's, let's pick, yeah, let's pick out. And I think with the water districts, we enhanced a lot of the county. I mean, we really enhanced, I mean, internet access. I know there are just a lot of, so much more for Pro County, more money. What can we do to help them expand into the rural area of the county? I mean, that's, I think.
I think the state just got some large grants for.
Federal dollars, but yeah, but.
It's, but they say Kansas is, yeah, very, needs to be improved with our, our connection, so. Um, so I don't know where we go from here. I appreciate everyone coming, I would like to do this on a regular basis. Um, we will in the next couple of weeks be getting our financials for halfway through the year. Um, I think it would be beneficial to sit down with everyone and see where we're at as far as this year, as we're working on the budget for next year also. Um. I kinda made up a schedule. If we wanna sign up for individual department heads to come before the commission, if everyone wants to look at their schedule. Are you for this? Do you still wanna meet individually?
As far as three and two, each one of the meetings.
Yeah. So next week's the Fourth of July, I had a.